One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, good morning, everybody. Calling me in order, we do have a forum, we need to agenda. May our agenda, so take a motion to add Steve Peterson and then the triathlon to the agenda. So, alright, I'll second that motion. All favor I, I both, alright, now taking a motion to approve the amended agenda in the minutes, so. Okay, there's more by Mark and I'll second it, any discussion? You're none, all favor I, alright, I. Steve, good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. Well, it's that time of year again, and appreciate you guys giving me some time to talk about the triathlon. July twenty seventh, Saturday, ninety ounce. Signups again for the triathlon have been very solid. Every year have averaged right around seventy to seventy-five, and I think as of, I haven't checked this morning, I think yesterday was sixty-eight. And so there's still more time for people to sign up. I think the big news this year is someone from Scotland is actually coming over to participate in the triathlon. And have some other people around the United States, state of Washington, Illinois, Missouri. Yeah, just spread out all over, so it continues to bring in people to the county. And yeah, in the past, it's it's been very positive feedback about our little county and town and how we support it, so. Appreciate your time, I know the the road crew does a little bit of prep work, and if if they can maybe take a look at the roads going out to the Bochiola Park again. That's all I really ask, but you know, other than that, and the sheriff's office, of course, has a big part in traffic control for the triathlon. And also, maybe use of some extra vehicles. Or also participating and helping out with organizing the triathlon, so, but I'll take any questions if you have any.
I just appreciate you doing, I think it's a good thing for the community, and it's a good thing for, you know, what you're doing, good organization.
Right.
For three or three years now.
This is our fourth year, yeah.
So it's awesome. It's always been, I've never heard it complaining, so that means it's a good thing, so.
Good, good turnout, we get a lot of people traveling from other places.
That's interesting.
Usually, yeah, you have the signups, and of course, their families with them, so it plays about hundred fifty plus people that come down to the area.
Does uh, secondary roads do some signage for you too, or not, or is it just basically cleaning up the roads?
Cleaning off the roads, so you know, there's just a few problem areas where gravel tends to, you know, get on the roads, which can pop tires for the riders, they they don't use normal bikes, it's smaller, narrow tires, that that can be an issue, but.
And you said that's the twenties seven?
Twenty-seven, yep, Saturday.
Okay. No, that's awesome, glad you're doing it, I hope you keep doing it and keep being a good turnout, so. Taking a motion to approve any county assistance to Steve Peterson and the triathlon. Alright, I'll second that motion, any discussion on it? Hearing none, all favor I, I, both. Motion carries, we'll have secondary roads, sheriff's office, help you out, whatever you need.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve, appreciate it. Alright, Rich isn't here today. Great Edge. BD eleven open ditch, BD eleven main G open ditch, that's at about.
I'm gonna start with that one?
Yeah.
Alright, I gotta read shuffle here.
Sorry.
That's alright. Uh, oh, Colton had brought that under my attention, so the Culver under Spruce. He says, I guess it's had problems for a while, I did some research back, annual review back in two thousand five, there was no issues, two thousand six, two thousand seven, they said there was concerns about the culvert being compromised, maybe the elevations need to be checked. And compared to the building plans, because he says something with the elevation, he says it feels like it's tipped slightly. I did some looking through the books, I can't find anything after two thousand seven, if anything was done, might have to dig in some other books. But we need to go back and try to find the original spec plans, maybe he said he can go out and do some measuring. There's some problem with the drainage right there.
That's some secondary roads will take care of anyways, right? Rogue crossing, I would assume when they were just doing themselves, could, I'll bring them to play, if any idea?
Um, I guess create bait arms.
I guess if they're capable.
Maybe I didn't bring those down. I emailed those pictures from, didn't I?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't print them.
So, that's okay. Well, you just leave that up to Rich, I guess, so look into that.
But I was gonna bring that to your guys' attention on that one. Mayor may not need some.
That's one of those, roads are gonna pay for it anyways, so I guess, yeah, they can just let them investigate it, and if it needs to be replaced, get it replaced, or resituated anyways. Alright, we have some claims or stamp warrants, their motion to approve Jamie Williams. Yeah, I'll second it. Any questions, Mark? Alright, all favor I, but I, both. Okay, things are approved. Then you have E ten last seven.
Yes, that's Barack, 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 yeah. Very, very, there you go. So, it's all at his dad's place there, he said that lateral, it runs east-west, needs cleaned out. I sent Colton to go inspect it, he says from the road, it doesn't look horrible, it doesn't look like big trees, anything horrible. They actually sprayed back in twenty twenty-three, I think it was.
Yeah.
Or no, they didn't spray, they said it was clean back in twenty twenty-three.
So south of four and.
South of four ten.
South of four ten. It's a black road, no, it's a gravel road.
Yeah.
Oh, I know.
Section thirty, or section thirty-one here. But so I'm wondering, because it's up here in this corner where they own that property, so I'm wondering if it's actually this little lateral, maybe they're having problems with, that they're not getting drainage up here? As opposed to the whole open ditch there?
Because it opens up.
Yeah, right here where that X is, it's open ditch that way, but right here is a lateral, and they own that property up here.
Somebody cleaned that themselves a few years ago.
Four ten the black path?
Yeah. Yeah, it's twenty-four, right? Oh, so it's, okay, now, yeah, I'm thinking it's farther down. Yes, we just south four ten between there and eight thirty-eight, eight thirty-eight and Wheelerwood, actually.
Yeah, so you got Wheelerwood over here.
That's what he wants cleaned between eight thirty-eight and Wheelerwood? So this is opening up a whole can of worms, so.
So I think we should actually have someone physically go out there.
Call on the the bridge down there too, on four hundred, so that's where it goes, it goes down through there, and then continues on down, we discussed that a few years ago, the guys really didn't think it needed to be cleaned farther down, but yet it's I'm guessing it's all sloughed exactly the same way, I'm not sure what you want it cleaned, but must be grass in there and stuff. Kind of not saying we're gonna do it.
Right, it's, yeah.
Should I be someone, I can get ahold of someone and get it out, because Colton didn't go down in there, he said there's too many mosquitoes, that would have carried them away. It was a really bad day that day when he went down.
Yep. Believe it. I, yeah.
I, I could, I can drive by when I go home.
Okay. Hold off on this one till we get.
Well, he's requested, so we have to have somebody look at it.
Okay.
Right.
I mean, if that's all he's requesting, that's just a small repair, I don't think we'd have to.
Just to clean the bottom.
Just to dip it.
Yeah, we wouldn't have, we just need to maybe get a couple of prices, which, I don't know if it's that deep for long reach or regular?
No, it'd take a little, it's probably fairly deep, I don't think, long reach, I think. It'd be best. So, we could have, you could have Elliot take a look at it.
Sure, I must have one too. Or no, Larson does.
Larson does. Rodney Smith too, I, I think Rodney Smith does too.
So maybe.
Prices. Couple of those guys, see what they think.
At least two if we can, if you'll submit them.
Was that a motion, or wait till we get the bids?
Wait till you get the bid.
Yeah. We can sign the work order.
Okay.
Yeah, we can make a motion then.
To approve the work order.
We can approve the work order.
And then we'll just approve actual work. Once we get bids.
Once you get a bid.
Okay, so we're saying a motion to approve the work order, second to motion. All favor I, I, opposed. And then, yeah, if you can reach out to them, and yeah, see Larson, see if Dragness and Elliot. Take a look at it.
Some bids out there.
Yeah, see if you can get two prices, then bring it back to us, I'm assuming we'd probably wait till crops are out.
I'm sure he wants it done now, because he loves it.
Did he? Well, quite too late now. It's a little way in the bag, yeah. But maybe they can do it, I don't know what's there for buffer strip, I mean.
I don't think there is a buffer strip there, I think it's all, it's all crop, but definitely a problem.
Can we, can we do that, we have to pick up there?
We have to pick up there.
Yeah, because the land, because he doesn't even know the land right there where it goes through, that's something.
It's a.
Grime and Anderson.
Yep.
I know Jeff.
Yep.
And, I mean, it'd be, yeah, we definitely brought damage, and that's just, we probably get a cheaper bid doing it now, and you know.
Yeah, so yeah. I mean, I looked into it, I guess if I can get done, I can get done.
Right, I'll shoot a message out to all three of those.
I'm sure it's not a ton where you could try keep it to maybe.
You could actually keep it pretty close, and then level it this far, so it'll be just a matter of three, four rows, basically.
Driving on. Yep. Okay.
And I just had one thing for that thirty-five south of Kenza. We were talking about that one a while back.
South of man.
Yeah, I guess Smith said Jim Blood is more than willing to get in there.
I gotta call, I I do have a, I'd left a message with him, so hopefully I'll hear back from him and get a price to see what that's gonna take. The one down along the railroad tracks, kind of line, south of man.
I'm still a problem.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Tasted the, I guess, in the railroad, never.
Their their project got pushed out to like twenty twenty-six or something like that, so we can't wait that long, it's gotta get, just gonna replace that twelve inch like we talked, because we know we met with the two landowners that are gonna pay for the bulk of it anyway, so. It just, it's just time to get it done, so the railroad's not moving forward on their project, or they're cleaning trees out, so.
That's all that, did that end up being an improvement versus a repair, or does it?
Just just a repair, just replacing what's there, because it's clay, and we'll try to put a non-perforated solid tile through there, so we can try to avoid the tree roots as much as possible until they get cleaned out. Yeah, any else though?
That's it.
Get anything for that? Yeah. We've got, play. Yeah. Mark made a motion, I'll second it, any discussion on any of them? Hearing none, all favor I, I, opposed. Things are approved. Payrolls, motion to approve payroll. That, I'll second it. Any discussion?
Thank you.
Hearing none, all favor I, I, opposed. Payrolls. Your reports, Jackie. Otters orderly. Land share report.
Motion to approve the board.
Alright, all second that motion, inspection. All favor I, I, opposed. More to so increases. One, public health, and one at Worth County Engineers Office, motion to approve the increases. Alright, I'll second it. Any discussion? Hearing none, all favor I, I, opposed. Alright. Your license?
Nope.
Building and grounds, made a special there. I haven't heard back from the list, I'll reach out to them again.
I guess the one thing is there's just maintenance things that happen, and we need to know who to actually reach out to, like light bulbs, or whatever else comes up, I mean.
Pretty balls that need change now, today?
I think it public health.
Was it?
Yeah, and those should all be LED, I think, so we wouldn't be taking, we wouldn't have vice coming in to do any, just put light bulbs in.
Right. Because he's been switching them over when he comes in, right?
Yeah, the ones here.
That's what I thought.
Because you can still see the yellow ones.
The old, yeah. Do we have any?
I have nothing.
Could be in there. I'll look around a little bit after the meeting and see if there's any around. Something like that, I should change.
And maybe there's, maybe there's some at public health, but I don't know.
Right.
Here, there's some spare issues.
I've seen a box downstairs, but I'm pretty sure that old, if I just need to go to the recycle center, but that's a whole other project. Alright, any else on building grounds for now?
No.
On top of our water main. Nothing there for now. Alright, discussion and possible action on the preliminary flat for the southeast and west Worth County EMS districts. Um, we got those a couple weeks ago, and we just can, now's the time to approve them. If we so desire, then we can just move forward and get our resolutions going for special election.
You have a motion to approve the preliminary flats for the southeast and west Worth County EMS district, I will make that a mention.
Okay, Mark has a motion out there, and I will second it, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all favor I, I, opposed. Alright. Engineers preliminary flat is approved. Now we have resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-nine, which is for the election of the west Worth County EMS district.
I'm making motion to the resolution for West Worth County EMS district.
Alright, there is a motion by Mark, and I will second it. This resolution is for the west EMS district, and a special election to be held September tenth between hours of seven AM and eight PM at your normal polling place. And if the election goes through or is approved, then there will be a tax at forty-five cents per thousand to all residences in the west EMS district. And also write in for three candidates to serve as trustee for the west EMS district, so anybody knows anybody that's interested over there? Put their name on the ballot. Okay, so Mark's got a motion, and I second it, we'll do a roll call vote. So maybe, I, stone, I. This resolution's duly adopted. Okay, resolution twenty twenty-four dash four zero. Is the EMS district in the southeast section, is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Oh, my god, motion.
Yeah, I'm a second it. Uh, this is the same thing, having a special election of September tenth. The only difference is, is that this district will tax at a levy of eighty-five cents per thousand on the residents, residences only, and also have to have three trustees to serve on that EMS timber board as well, so. Okay, roll call vote. So maybe, or stone, I. Well, resolutions duly adopted. One more step down. Rights, where Rebecca goes, let's, Melissa. So might, might someday.
Now that I have the the right date. I have, Beth has a lot of committee meetings that I'm gonna attend, so tomorrow's the workforce recruitment. One industrial committee is on Friday, and then we have the alliance meeting next week, and then her full board meeting is next week too, so. That is about it for me.
Alrighty. Good meeting yesterday, so hopefully we get some more support from our other entities around, so.
Yeah, thanks for coming, that was a really good meeting.
It was, alright, anything from Melissa? Thank you very much. People's service, morning, Joan.
So, it's like a lot of this stuff, we kind of covered in the last meeting, in terms of like the water main project, and flushing and pressurizing the main, stuff like that. We had our DNR water audit. I think I might have talked about that the last one too, our response, we're gonna agree with that this week, it's freedom one year. And I think the only question that we have for you guys, and I think we talked about it, but the the wells, since we're gonna be writing that up today, I just wanna know exactly what, can you give a response for?
So I talked, I talked to Jason at B and K, he's gonna have L and M pump, get us a price to just pump the well out, just exercise it.
Yep.
Um, so he was, he, because he had met out there with him on the other wells, so they were gonna get a price together for that, I talked to Jacob at DNR, basically asked him what requirements are, what he wants to do, we're not gonna plug them.
Yeah.
What do we have to do to keep them open, since we're not using them, just in that report, he said basically just put in there that we we plan on utilizing them in the future, so we do not want to cap them, and we will exercise them annually.
Yeah, I was gonna say that, when I talked to Jake at the DNR, that's basically, as long as there's a future plan, they don't really care, as long as there's some steps in, you know, being taken to to be able to exercise them.
Yeah, so that's, that's what we're gonna, they're gonna end up doing is just, yeah, so just let them know that we will, we plan on using them in the future at some point. But for now, we will start an annual exercising program.
Okay.
And then we'll just kind of leave that up to, see what the prices, but leave it up for L and M, just to come out, whenever, and just pop it on the ground for twenty, thirty minutes, and just move some water in there, so we can use them when we need them, because to drill those would be very, very costly, we don't wanna lose that, so.
No, it's actually a good asset, we forced to buy.
Yeah, so. So, yeah, that's where.
That sounds good. Um, other than that, it was just new check valve and the sodium carbonate pump. Other than that, everything else was good for the month.
Definitely, bumming it up on our softener, is there?
Yeah, I was gonna talk about that, so we are doing, I guess what we're doing right now is is creating, we're trending some numbers, so we per the DNR, per our permit, we're only required to do hardness once a week, but we've been doing it every day. And then recording where we're at, like, well, if the wells are running, if the wells are off, where the softener is at in throughput, you know, like whether it was just regen, or what, you know, what percentage we're at. I did talk to Todd, I believe it, Coligan is his name. My concern is that we are at the end of the lifespan of the desiccant resin that's in those softeners. I mean, each, any any filter like that has got, they've got a lifespan, we're like thirty-nine million gallons. So I would venture to guess that we're we're toward the end. I asked him about sampling those, and he hasn't gotten back to me yet, so.
Has they ever, has anybody ever pulled the lids and looked in there? Do you know what's going on?
I know that they do, you know, like a core sample, you know, like you would with soil, they've got a probe that they put down in there and take a sample, and then it gets set off, but I'm just waiting for him to get back to me on that, but we, it's so sporadic right now, it seems like I can't, we're, we can't really put our finger on why the hardness spikes. And when the hardness spikes, then our manganese spikes, and so they're they're working together, and it's just, it's kind of a, we're just trying to get numbers compiled right now.
Sure, okay. Well, that's something that needs to be done. Looks like we're coming in light with some of our ARP dollars that we've earmarked out there, so that's something we could probably do, so.
Okay.
If it's something that needs to be done, I guess push him a little harder and see what that would cost.
Okay, I'll get ahold of him again, and see if we can speed this process up.
Yeah, just because it's they want all new linens out there, and I wanna see repercussions as well.
You know, and I think it, I don't know if it felt like that or not, but, you know, obviously, we we wanna keep the casino happy, you know, I did find in our digging that they did do, or you guys did at one point, an RO a unit out there, they did a what was the, Zenia, of the tower, they had an RO skid out there in maybe oh nine.
Before us, yeah, before us.
I mean, it's a pretty lengthy report, and they must have been having some similar issues then, because they brought this whole skid out and hooked it up, and they they did it, I think, for thirty days, so. I mean, that's a big, big deal, but.
Right, well, and and so the casinos talked about doing something like that within the park, within their building, and for this new and it's smaller system, they probably shouldn't have to, this thing should be able to run properly and get them soft water and not have these these calcium issues or anything like that, so we should be able to to make this work, so hopefully we don't have to, they don't have to go to that expense, because it's
Yeah.
It's not much, the system's pretty, like you say, pretty high tech for what it is, and pretty, you know, it maybe needs, we need some more maintenance, but.
Right, and I, when when Jake was out and he did our water audit, I did talk to, I mean, I think for the size of unit that they would have to put in, they they may have to have their own water operator for that. So that's something that can, I don't, you know, you have to look at numbers, and gallon, but based on the size, they may end up, you know what I mean, like they, that's something that they need to consider too.
Seems kind of odd, beans are getting supplied from certified, you know.
Right, well, that's, yeah.
But they're, but they're treating, but they're doing a different treatment.
Right, and it would, it would remove all treatment that we put in, so essentially you'd end up with raw water, I mean, super clean, but raw water.
Yeah, and they're, yeah, they're just, they're doing a different treatment, so that wouldn't, you know, make sense, I guess, so.
So, and I, I mean, we're we're trying to pinpoint what exactly going on, but I'll push it, I'll push Coligan a little harder on whether or not we can get some samples taken on that.
Yep, and then, yeah.
Just keep you guys in the know.
Okay, sounds good. Sound good, I think. Hopefully at some point here, we'll get some well pumps figured out, and get those switched, and get that tower online here soon, so.
Are they still pushing end of, end of July, August, or?
I would say August sometime, I haven't heard anything of of pumps getting replaced yet, so. Um, so I'd assume it would be August sometime now, because we got two weeks of July left. So, but yeah, as soon as you hear something, Jason, he'll be, I'm sure he'll be reaching out to you guys.
Yeah, he's, yeah, he's gonna get it.
Yeah. You got anything for these guys?
Much so.
Okay, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Thank you guys.
And I'm gonna hold you after.
That's me, I saw that.
I didn't know what time you got done last night, so I just called anyway. Thanks. Alright, Department Head Discussion, IT credit card request.
I shut off Sam's card, so Joel said I might be breaking things, so. So apparently we need another card, he doesn't want his name on it, but it's okay, I buy my name for now, and, yeah. So, and it had a ten thousand dollar limit, so if we could do that again.
Yeah, make that a motion. Mark, Mark's got a motion to approve a IT credit card for temporary till we get a new employee. Alright, I'll second that motion. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all favor I, I, opposed. Right.
Thank you.
Kathy Meyer, of the health.
Well, good morning, I'm just here to just update and Shannon couldn't be here. State's due to come anytime, and she's got a couple of meetings today, but anyway, as you know, we kind of had a changing of the color of guards here, so I was appointed the new chairperson of the Board of Health. We've had quite a few meetings lately. Um. We are. We were, we've been very busy talking to other counties administrators and agencies to see how we can, can bring in more revenue for the county. And, um, through that, we, we have found programs that we, we weren't aware of before. So that was really good, um, myself, I counted, I talked to, uh, Mitchell, Cerro Gordo. And Wright County and Diane picked up Winnebago County, so they have been very good to kind of. Give us some ideas, um, the state gal Roxanne Smith, we had a, a Zoom meeting with her. And she oversees all of the counties for public health. And she, she suggested that we do not decertify. And, um, Wright County also said the same thing, well, I'll go back to Roxanne first because I asked her, I said, so if we did decertify. What does that mean for recertification? And she said it would be a nightmare. And in, and so, and Wright County told me too that the reason why they decertified was part of it was management. And the other part of it is they had quite a few agencies that were competitive. With public health available to help in the homes. That's not the case with Worth County, um, and even Mercy Home Care. It has a shortage of staffing, any of the agencies that, any of the other counties that I talked to is they have staffing issues as well. They could not. Necessarily help us out with staffing, however, there is one nurse that they were going to look into from Cerro Gordo County to see if possibly she could, um. Be a, a private. Contract. That was a nurse of theirs, so. We haven't heard back on that. We have two positions open, um. One for an R N and one for administrator, I know as of now, there's been two applications for the R N and one for an administrator. Uh, we have put our admissions on hold right now, that was one of the suggestions from Wright County, she said just step back. Kind of put things on hold. See what you can manage, you know, with what we have right now until we can get some more people hired. And then I guess the last thing that we just kind of wanna do is, is to know that we, we wanna build a good relationship with our Board of Health and, um. Supervisors. And work with you, I mean, we're quite aware that we need to work on the budget and. We're looking at our positions and if we can possibly. You know, make one, one position into one or, or whatever, or some of them assume some of the other duties. That's what we're looking at. And I've. Had Jackie on speed dial and Mark on speed dial and so. I just wanna say I appreciate you guys. You know, taking the time to talk to us through this transition.
Well, we're thankful that you guys and the rest of the board that is volunteer, thank you guys for helping out with that, cause. This is a bit of a tough time for public health, um, and as far as relationship with us. Our door's always open, you know, we want a good relationships with our boards, um, then I wanna publicly say that this, we were never intended to undermine or. Get rid of public health, it's not possible. Um, state says we have to do something, we're gonna do something, we wanna keep it, but. The money is something that has to change and that's just where. My personal feelings are as far as the supervisors, we just need to get organized, cause it does cost the county considerable amount of money. We just need to try to get it to cost the less.
Yes.
So.
And with that being said, um, I, I'm glad you said that is, there is a big need for. For home services and it's like, you know. Well, Mark was there too, we're kind of like, okay, so what can we do to keep this in, in the home, because we do have a very, very good reputation in our patients that we are keeping in their homes. And so that's the last thing that we wanna do is to eliminate that.
Right.
Cause then your nursing homes are gonna get full and then where are these, I mean.
Yeah.
They're, they're healthier in their own homes.
No, I agree, I agree, but I just, yeah, but it's, it's. It's a good thing, I mean, and, and everybody utilizes it one way or another, whether it just be a flu shot once a year or something, you know, everybody in the town is utilizing it somehow, and. So.
And speaking of the shots, that's one thing that we're looking at to maybe bring in some more revenue is we might. There's a program out there that can actually be used, it's called Vaxicare, that you, they will actually bring in, they'll bring in the vaccinations, they will oversee them. When they know something's gonna expire, they will get rid of them, so they will never have any of that, so we are looking at possibly expanding more vaccinations. In our county, which would, which would probably bring in some good revenue.
Well, that's just a big, I guess, revenue struggle, fight a little more of that, so.
Yeah.
Are we still on for the nineteenth, or you got other meetings scheduled? I had nineteenth on the calendar for some reason, because we're gonna have to, if you've got applications, we need to review them, correct? And like, we're gonna need to make a decision because our. Patient to nurse ratio could be off, which could cause us to be shut down at any time, correct?
No.
You got, you got, you got them covered?
Uh, Roxanne told us that as long as we can meet our patient needs, that, that the nurse to patient ratio is not an issue.
Okay.
And because that, when we talk with them too, the girls are like, okay, so if we, are, are we gonna get. Our license on the line, because you know, they worked very hard to get their licenses and, and they were quite concerned about that, and she says that is not an issue.
Okay, that was a concern.
So yes, I do, we are still around for the nineteenth for meeting with you, you guys, and then we have a public health meeting after that.
Uh, you're talking August?
Right.
Okay, for some reason I got one here in July, so.
No, it's obvious.
Yeah. I got one in August too, I got one in July.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if anybody has any questions or whatever. Reach out to us.
Okay. Thankful for what you do as a.
We've, we've been, we've been busy, we've been, we've been, and I, I mean, really proud, I'm, I told the gals, I go, okay, let's, let's kind of try to regroup, let's see what we can do and. They've been, they've been very, very cooperative and very willing.
So when do you plan to set up a meeting for, to work with these applications here?
I was gonna talk to you about that.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Alright.
Perfect, cool. I got a bunch of other fires I need to put out.
How long they been posted for?
Just since Friday.
Okay, I thought, I thought I just saw them come out, I didn't know if they were out a little before that or not, so what's.
So, I was pretty happy about that.
Yeah, considering it took over six months to get the last one.
Right, I know it's a struggle, right, to even get R N applications, so that's, that's a good sign, I guess.
Yeah, and the other thing too is just to let you all know is in talking to all of these other counties is, you know, I asked them, I said, so. What is your going rate for your salaries, you know, for your nurses, for your aides or whatever, and, and we're right in line with any of them. So, um, I was, I was very happy to hear that.
Sure. Is, is anything ever been discussed or consolidation with another county, I know everybody's kind of.
Solidation sharing have been discussed, or they're going to go full call consolidation or look at certain areas, maybe we can work, um. Share some patient care somewhere or another to help with cost.
I did find out from Mitchell County that they were willing to go five miles over the line. Cerro Gordo County does not offer that. Um, Winnebago County, I guess that question wasn't asked to them. Necessarily, but at least we know that we have that option and any of the administrators that, that we've talked to have been very. Very, um, kind and said, you know, if there's anything that you can help, we can help you with, uh, more than happy to do that. Just reach out to us, so we've got a, we've got a really good building relationships with our surrounding co- uh, counties. I know Enis was at our last, uh, meeting that we had, Mark was not available and he was. He told us afterwards that he was. He felt better after being there to know what we're doing and looking into things.
He seemed to have some enthusiasm, we have it in the past.
Mm-hmm.
To look for more grants and things like that, to do more things, to make more money, or, you know, make it more profitable, like I say, using that term, but. That's what we need to do, we need to lower that deficit somewhere or another and.
And unfortunately. Fiscal year started, so we can't get any of those grants, you know. For this year, but there are, I, there is some other things that we can look at and. And, uh, when we do get fully staffed, I know the, the gals that are over there, um. Shanna and Lexi, I mean, they're, they're ready to write them.
Good, well, at least you know the opportunity, there's more opportunities out there, and if they know where they're at, then at least they can go after them at times, right, so.
Fiscal year for grants from January to January, or does it run July to July?
I think it's July to July, but the Elder Bridge ones, I'm not sure about that one. In talking to Elder Bridge, Elder Bridge, there could be some money out there available to help us with home aid.
That's where it needs to be.
So.
Help with that, so.
I was. I think Mark and I were pretty impressed with the work that the gals have done.
They did a lot of looking and they're doing a lot of thinking, which I guess we've never heard that in the past, I'm on board for eight years and have never heard anybody. Wanted to look for more stuff.
Sounds fantastic, appreciate them stepping up. I kinda, I hear second, third hand, so, um. It's just good, good to hear that, so glad you did give us an update so that we can kind of. See the brighter side of things.
Well.
In the future.
There were quite a few sleepless nights and a lot of phone calls, but. It says, let's, let's just try to keep this positive and, and try to move forward so we can serve the people as long as we can for Worth County, cause. It's, it's really, really needed, I said, we're not gonna go down without fighting.
Hmm. Oh, fantastic, fantastic, so. Anything else for us?
I don't think so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Appreciate it.
All right, any other department head discussion while we're here? Lisa?
Planning worksheet for subdivisions? What do you guys?
I, I, like I said before, I'm fine with either one, whatever's easiest for you to.
Mm-hmm.
I have, I don't have an opinion either way, cause I don't know what you're doing it actually, so, I mean, it has more to do with what makes your job. And it makes it more right, you can get communications between attorneys and all the crap.
What I can do for the attorney that's working on. The one subdivision as of a week ago, I can let them know that this is what we do require.
It will.
Um, I did send out the. Information as far as redoing. The subdivision ordinance for the county.
Yep.
And haven't really gotten any response, I've heard nothing from that.
From zoning.
Zoning.
And the only thing is Jeff is getting bombarded by the, uh, replacing. You know.
Yeah.
Wayman.
Mm-hmm.
Still, there's stuff going on here with the central committee as well as he's on zoning board, so maybe that's why he's. Not responded, I don't know.
I did have a conversation with the county attorney before he left town again. And, um, he agreed that yes, he feels that our ordinance that we have. In place for subdivisions needs to be revised.
And that's a zoning board.
Yeah.
And they bring it, they would bring it to us.
Yeah.
As a, cause then we'd have to post it and do it as an, as an updated ordinance, so.
Yes, so I would really like to see that happen.
Yeah.
Because it's outdated.
Right, it ain't working. Apparently.
Well, ma- 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 it's making a job seriously really, really tough, it shouldn't be, but whatever list works for you, you and your office.
Whatever you is most.
Okay.
You gotta, you've gotta deal directly with it, we don't, I mean, I'm not gonna act like I know what's going on.
I don't, yeah, I mean, not to like say, I do care, but it's not that, it's more what makes your job.
And hopefully there's any guidance needed from our attorney to get it.
Yeah, it's been a lot of frustration in the last, what, six months or more, so.
Well, this goes back over a year.
Yeah, it's over here.
A year or two.
So, the other thing with planning and zoning is the com- comprehensive plan.
You're supposed to be working on that too, no, I haven't either.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna send out an email. To those guys and just ask them with some assistance on updating the, uh. Subdivision ordinance and as well as where comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
Well, I'll send an email out too. Just see what we get for a response and.
Different planning zone, I want you. For the organization. That's all I needed to know.
I haven't heard anything since the last hearing.
Okay.
Most of those have been renewed.
Yeah, or renewed one, that would do. Okay, alright, so thank you, Teresa, I know it's not a pain in the butt, but appreciate it.
Yes.
Any other department heads, Mr. Hanson, you're in the room for a reason.
Yep, so I've talked to a couple of meetings ago about our, you know, thermal going out at Keynes. And it went, it went, and we got a couple of bids, we got a bid for replacement Gio and then one doing just conventional heating and cooling. It's about a four thousand dollar difference in favor of conventional, so we're getting a couple more bids for that. Um, just didn't know if. You know, we talked, you guys had mentioned looking for spending the A R P money, didn't know if that's an option for that, or.
So is that the original?
Yeah, it's a second system.
And how many years has that been?
Oh, this one's been replaced since I've been here, so under seventeen.
Which is like fifteen or less is average most.
Yeah.
When I hear.
Do you have any on? For air furnace?
Yes.
And?
And A C.
A C.
And I'm guessing operating cost for today's equipment is probably not a lot of difference.
It might actually be cheaper to be. Can, you know, eventual, just because when they put it in initially, line gave us all sorts of break.
Right.
And like two years in, they took everything away.
If you put more bids. You can, then I would probably say we just go back to the traditional one.
I think we have some extra A R P dollars we can use out there.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, and I'll visit with Jackie to learn about it, but. We'll find out if there's any other requirements besides having several bids or whatever, so it should be.
I think those have two.
Those are two.
You're well under the threshold for states, not so long, we have too competitive.
I just didn't know for the A R P, if there was any other special requirements, but.
They're just, they're just the competitive, yeah, competitive quotes, I guess you'd call it, right?
Cause technically we, you guys declared it, um, lost income anyway.
Right, so it's very easy for more fans, so.
Yeah, she had some.
Okay.
Extra places, we'll. We'll definitely go with that, cause it's. Yeah. If it's four thousand to start and if it even runs at the same amount of money.
Right.
We're saving money.
Absolutely, so. And it will last just as long, the longer.
Yeah, I'm like, great, these are little. Yeah. Okay, anything else?
That's all I got.
Chair, anything? Oh, good, they quiet this week?
Well, like, yeah. We, I just thought that we're gonna have one deputy going on medical the end of August, so we won't have any other ones. By then, so it's a little more short, but.
Alright. Anybody else, our meds? Supervisor Weekly, Mark.
Uh, we're ending up the monster, I guess, so.
Uh.
I didn't make anything last week, I'm sorry.
So I wish I had a land on the meeting. Uh, last week, D D eighteen.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, I did go to, uh, Shore Rock Watershed on Thursday. Uh, we have, we're trying to finish, work on our final, our final report with the D N R for the grant money we got, so we just gotta gather a little more information on that. Um, we've got two more communities that are finally, finally getting involved now, some of the Thanrock Falls.
Okay.
Good, so they've got some representation there. And Lori Meacham.
Yep.
Uh, has taken over as their order representative.
Okay.
So getting some more support from there, so going good and, uh. Just kind of in that stage now, we're, we're starting to turn to fair up some projects, cause there, we know there's some grant dollars from D N R coming out in the spring for signage and that kind of stuff, but, um. We start with that and try to get some. Projects on the. See what actually needs to be done or where we can try to look for things to get done at, so.
Your trouble for smaller communities like you just had, they, they were kind of holding out because of fear of maybe having to put money into these.
That's, that was.
Run into down at the, the Winnebago one.
Yeah, that was their first kind of concern, what's, what's this gonna cost us, well, nothing necessarily, you know.
Time, just talk to the board.
We need time, we need your input and. That'll just, the more people that are involved or the stuff affects, the better chances we probably have of getting dollars.
Dollars.
Make changes, so. But. But that's all I had, so. Uh, anything else we could put on the agenda? Yeah, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second it, I'll favor I.
Alright.
I. You can adjourn.